...you all to the Byram Hills Board of Education meeting for December 5th, 2017. And I would like you to stand and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, for those of you who tend to tune into our Board of Ed meetings, whoever you are, this meeting may look a little different than our meetings we usually do, and that's because we have standing room only. You see, we here, we meet about every two weeks to discuss board business, school business, things like finance and athletics and facilities and policy and curriculum, all this stuff that we find interesting, certainly important, but we don't usually get to have our meetings in front of such a big audience. So, we're thrilled to have you all here. It's really our honor to honor all of you. And in just a couple of minutes, we are going to get to hear from some of our student leaders in our district, leaders in academics and leaders in actions. We look forward to that. But I have just a couple of formalities, business formalities I have to go through first. Won't take long. I called the meeting to order at 7:05 and we went right into executive session. And we discussed item 3.1, which was a negotiation matter, BHTA. We discussed 3.2, personnel matter, administrative tenure. 3.3, district matters, succession planning. 3.4, Board of Education matters, succession planning. 3.5, illegal matter, transportation. 3.6, legal matter, individual student. 3.7, hold on one second. 3.7, legal matter, budget. And 3.8, budget matter, fund allocation. And we also added, we had one extra item we added to our executive session, it was item 3.9, personnel matter, individual employer. So with that revision to our agenda, can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Some.
In a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And at this time, are there any comments from the public of any matters that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for personnel, special services and business?
Some.
Second. All in favor? Now, our consent agenda is just a method that we use to approve a bunch of business items, just collectively, just to make our meetings run a little bit more efficiently. It's things like purchase orders, appointments for positions and all that. And we all have time to review what all these matters are beforehand, so does the public, but just for efficiency sake, we approve them all collectively. But tonight, I just want to highlight a couple items that we just approved that I think warrant just a comment. And there are three retirements in our district, three notable retirements in our district. And the first one is our Wampus principal, Deborah Colliastro, is retiring at the end of this year. You might have heard that. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Deborah for all her contributions to our district. We got Deborah from a neighboring school district, and we were so fortunate to get such an experienced and seasoned educational leader. And she has really focused on students' wellness, their emotional wellness, and letting students realize that if they identify how they're feeling, they can tame it, name it and tame it, she calls it. And that's really an important building block for actually anybody, how to deal with their emotional wellness. And she's also tackled mindset, growth mindset, letting everybody know that there's no limit to what you can learn. So she's made tremendous contributions to our district, and we are so thrilled that we've had her for so many years. And we'll have many more opportunities to honor her during the school year. She'll be here for the rest of the school year. And emotional wellness becomes even more important, I think you would agree with me, as you get to the later years in high school. So you're going to need those building blocks. And we have two people in our guidance department that are going to be retiring at the end of the year, and that's Anne Kaplan and Susan Buckman. Both incredible professionals, amazing expertise, amazing knowledge and patience. And they have helped so many families and so many children as they tackle that transition period between being in Byram Hills and then what comes next. So we've been very fortunate to have them in our district for so long. So in just a couple of minutes, we're going to get to talk to all of you as well, because I think right now, we are there actually. We are right there. We're going to take, cover our very first special report. We have two special reports tonight. And this one is our student recognition for national merit and cum laude. And we are full house tonight with some very proud parents, I would say. So the students that are here tonight that are getting cum laude recognition have been inducted into this. And this is our top 10% GPA. And our national merit recognition, those are commended and semifinalists, are top in the country based on their PTSA, their PSATs that they took in their junior year. So we are arguably one of the top schools in New York State for sure, and definitely in the country. So you guys are actually top scholars in the country. And you, you know, we're a school district that really values all the contributions from our students, from our faculty, but we are an academic institution first, and that's what puts us on the map. People move to our school district based on how well we do academically. So that's all of you. So I just wanted to thank you for keeping our home values up. I know that was not your intention, but we thank you for that.
It's a huge responsibility.
Huge responsibility. So thank you for that. And this is definitely not one of those participation awards, right? You didn't just get up one day and say, alright, I'm going to do well on a test. This was built from way back when. One of the jobs of Board of Education is to give you guys the tools that we think that you're going to need to succeed, but certainly what you do with those tools is up to you. And you really took these tools and flew with them. And your families, we have to give a special thank you to your families because they sent you to school not hungry, fed, gave you space at home to do work, encouraged your academics. And I know all of you, because I know many of you, don't just do academics, right? You do everything else, or your parents have all helped support that. So we thank all of you and appreciate you sharing all these wonderful children with us. And we'll turn it over to our superintendent, Jen Porell, who is so happy you are here and very proud of you all. And I have to say that when I hear something like an elementary school principal is retiring and two guidance counselors are retiring in a top school that sends students to the most competitive colleges in the country, I am not worried because you have created our reputation. And I know that we will have incredible resumes and people knocking on our doors because of the work of students. So I want to thank you for that contribution. Many of you know I have two sons, one is a high school junior and a senior, and I watch rigor happen on a daily basis. So I get the amount of time and energy that you've been putting into your studies, and it is to better yourselves. You know, this isn't always a competition to get the highest average. You're going to realize when you're 20 and 30 and 40 and 50, that having the highest average isn't what it's about. It's about achieving. And I think that that's what both the cum laude and the national merit help us to understand. And it's about whatever that achievement means to you and whatever thing you're doing in your lives.
Well, before you get all carried away with yourselves [laughter] and convince you the greatest things ever to walk the earth.
Thank you.
Well, to their parents they are and they should be.
And to me.
And to you. I would just state that this is the 20th time that I've seen students like yourselves honored for cum laude and national merit. And I would just ask you to remember that you've been given a great gift by your parents and by this district, but with that great gift comes a great responsibility. And it's not to take what you have for granted, not to take what you have and just think, oh well, I'll deal with it some other time and I'll get my act together some other time and I'll do it some other time. You have a responsibility really to better the world now. And to better the world by your conduct, by your ethics, by your morality, by the way you interact with people. This is your responsibility. And so when you go out, believe it or not, people will be watching you. And they'll be watching you reflect on the community you came from, and they'll be watching you reflect on yourselves and on your parents. So take the gifts you've been given, use them wisely, use them well, and use them responsibly. And answer the phone.
Thank you, Ari. And you know, as Robin had indicated, the cum laude recipients who are here tonight, we had a very nice ceremony a couple of weeks ago. Somebody inducted into cum laude that night was our principal, Mr. Walsh, who gave a very nice speech. And I see here also, we have another teacher, Joy Reynolds, who is being inducted next year. We're so happy that you could come and celebrate with our students. It is not just about being 10% of your class, but you know, I was looking at the cum laude mission statement because Dr. Apt, as you can only imagine, is Dr. Apt here? Okay, sent this to me because she wanted to make sure that I was fully versed in cum laude, because I've only been in the district since I was 21. But the mission statement does say that cum laude society recognizes academic achievement in secondary schools for the purpose, it is not just for academic achievement sake, but it's for the purpose of promoting excellence, justice and honor. So when you think about these accolades, think about excellence, justice and honor in everything you do from here forward, and that not this being the end of your journey with your appreciation. Next, I want to talk about national merit and commended semifinalist recipients who are also here tonight. National merit programs started in the 1950s, believe it or not, but when we look at the 1.6 million students who took the PSAT at the same time that you did, the commended students who are here tonight are in the top 4%. The seven semifinalists are in the top 1% of 16,000 students. That is unbelievable. We have 30 students who are either commended or semifinalists. To reach that margin as a high school student is pretty remarkable. And that takes a lot of time. It means that you're good thinkers, it means that you've been applying yourselves, and it'll also be really nice for your parents to hear that if any of you are awarded finalists in the spring, there's $32 million worth of scholarships out there. They're moving in that direction, which would be wonderful for all of you.
Not for the winner, for a lot of kids.
Yes, for a lot of kids. So anyway, I think that enough has been said, but I would like to say that, I would like to think that at your time in Byram Hills, between your parents and the school, that we have afforded you the opportunities that have helped you to get to this level. We didn't do your work, and despite the fact that you have, you know, genetic connections or not to your parents, they didn't give you drive. You know, that's something that you developed on your own. So Dr. Kultenekker is going to read your names, and we would like you all to circle around this board table somehow, to come up and shake hands with our Board President. And then we'd like to take a great picture of you. But I want to thank you for making the superintendent's job a job that anybody would want to have in this district. Okay, Tim.
We'll start with Alexis Shieberman. [applause] Cum laude, national merit. Rachel Ackerman. Cum laude and national merit. Cum laude and national merit. Cum laude and national merit. Chandler Glad. National merit.
It's okay to kiss your mother. That's a superintendent power.
That is on TV. Stella Lee. Cum laude and national merit. Mallory Lipstein. Cum laude and national merit. Jack Lorenzo. Cum laude and national merit. Alexander Melneck. Cum laude and national merit. Zachary Millowitz. Cum laude and national merit. Jonathan Muin. National merit. National merit. National merit. Samuel Schwartz. National merit. National merit. National merit. Cum laude and national merit. Sophia Von Lewin. National merit. And Devin Wolf.
Welcome to the beginning of many awkward moments in your life.
We give you photo opportunities if you'd like.
Yeah. Oh yeah. Do you want to make the pictures? Now the picture's complete. You don't. Always look at the boys, they take great pictures. The boys take great pictures. Congratulations to all of you. We know that they all have very busy schedules and we're sure you want to get back to your homework, I'm guessing?
Oh yeah, sure.
So, you know, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we totally understand if you want to go on to other things tonight. We really appreciate y'all being here and congratulations to the families.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you for coming. We'll take a little recess so you can exit. How's that? You involved in so much, thank you.
Why are there so many students here? Shouldn't they be elsewhere?
They want to be elsewhere, so we're, we are, but we are so thrilled that you're here today. This starts our second special report of the evening, student leadership. And I don't know if you've all heard, but throughout the district, we always talk about our district vision, which is creating the leaders of the next generation. And in fact, one of the board goals this year has been to really look at student leadership, the experiences and the opportunities. So that you are all here, taking the time out of, which we know is a very busy schedule today, to meet with us is really, it's really important and we're really excited to have you here, and we're really eager to hear what you have to say. Turn it over to me. So welcome, everyone. I'm so happy to see you. And one of our, the biggest board goals is excellence in teaching and learning. And what that means is that we are providing you with opportunities. And I know that you've heard often, creating the leaders of the next generation is what we're aspiring to as a district. And you probably have also heard me describe what that means. You know, what does it mean to be a leader today? To be a leader doesn't necessarily mean you have to be a president. Being a leader means that you understand yourself, you understand your goals, you understand others around you, you have an approach to challenges, and you take others with you on the way as you're doing those challenges. For us, developing those opportunities for you in the school, in the classroom, in extracurricular or curricular activities is immensely important. Someone can teach you algebra, someone can teach you English writing skills, but who can teach you to go out and make changes in your own world and the world of others? That's a skill that we hope that you're gathering through all these different experiences. So I want to welcome you tonight. I want to thank you for taking leadership opportunities. It means that you are doing something outside of what's required, and you're doing it because you're passionate about it. And inevitably, it's the thing that's going to get you to a very happy place. I am very fortunate that I have a profession that I am very passionate about, Dr. Kultenekker. I mean, many of you have seen us in action, and you understand how passionate we are about working with students. We want you to be able to have that too one day, to find something for yourselves that you feel so good about going to on a daily basis that enriches you and you feel that you're enriching others. So welcome, tonight we have many leaders. We have our eighth grade students from Sale, from the middle school, who are here, both eighth grade, right?
Yeah.
Eighth grade students from Sale. We have peer leaders for the high school. We have our mentors from our mentor program where the seniors are mentors to freshmen for a half year. We have our chemistry teacher assistants and computer science teacher assistants. We have team captains, right? Proud team captains, extracurricular club presidents. And right behind you sits a really supportive faculty and administration. Right? We also have, how could I forget my student leadership board? It's the thing I definitely do at least 12 times a year. And our students from student leadership board. So for parents who are here, these are students who have really exhibited to us that they can lead Byram Hills to a very different place. For that, we thank you because we understand that these commitments come at the expense of other things, expensive downtime. But there's a certain good downtime that comes out of this also, and I know from some of the experiences I've had with students, you tell me that this is an opportunity where you connect, and this is an opportunity where you really feel like you are part of a culture at Byram Hills. So it is really time well spent. So thank you for being here. And Dr. Kultenekker is going to run a curriculum conversation. I know that this looks odd, like you're used to us now sitting in round circles and doing problem-based learning activities. So to sit in front of a board might feel a little bit different to you, but really we just want you to feel natural and talk to us about your great experiences.
We don't bite.
This is the only fun the board has all year long. So let's make it. Graduation's not fun. Yeah, graduation is a lot of fun. Robots. Didn't you bring the robot? Yes.
No robots tonight?
He was the fun event from last year.
Robot thing was great. Bring any with you tonight?
No.
It's different roles, so thank you, that was nice, and this is an exciting evening. And let me remind the board at any time if you have a question, jump on in. And this is meant to be a discussion and a conversation with these students. We'll have them introduce themselves in a moment, but tonight is about exploring what we are now projecting at every board meeting, our mission to create the leaders of the next generation. And just a word to the parents, if you have any doubt about your children at any weak moment in their lives, do know that we're so proud of them and they are really on the right trajectory for creating leaders. I've had the opportunity to meet with your children over the past two weeks to practice and start taping a Bow Cat TV show, and we're quite proud of what they are accomplishing and what they contribute to the district. And what we're here tonight is to explore, what are we doing to currently create the leaders of the next generation? What does leadership mean for students at this age? And then I want to use this group in this moment to help us think about how we can continue to develop leadership going forward. And what does it mean if that's our district mission for every student, from kindergarten through 12th grade? So that when every child walks across that stage at graduation, we know that we've given those students the skills to be leaders once they graduate. And that's really is our mission, and they're going to help us think through that a bit tonight. In a quick way, leadership is simply the way to mobilize others to do good things. And it's also a way to shape the future. And through my conversations with you, a lot of those types of things came out. So we'll get started in just a moment, but let's have you each go through and say your name, say what grade you're in, and what leadership group you represent. And if you represent multiple ones, feel free to throw those out if you need to. So we'll start at this end.
Hi, I'm Manila Papo. I'm a junior and I'm on the student leadership board.
Hi, I'm Hailey Crook. I'm a senior and I'm a mentor.
I'm Alex Weiss. I'm a senior and I'm a peer leader.
Justin Schwellhold, senior peer leader and club president.
I'm Michael Gagliardi. I'm a senior mentor and I'm also the captain of the football and lacrosse team.
I'm Madison Jakai. I'm in eighth grade and I'm representing Sale.
I'm Sydney Levy. I'm in eighth grade and I'm representing Sale.
I'm Alexis Aberbin. I'm a senior and I'm representing the student leadership board and I'm a chemistry TA.
I'm Zachary Millowitz. I'm a senior, I'm also representing student leadership board and I'm a chemistry TA.
I'm Devin Wolf. I'm a senior chemistry TA and a club president.
I'm Ally Ricciardo. I'm a senior and I'm an AP computer science TA.
I'm Michael Bocco and I'm a mentor.
I'm Scott Asine. I'm representing a peer leader and a basketball captain.
I'm Drew Franklin. I'm in 11th grade and I'll be representing the student leadership board.
I'm Kira Roney. I'm a volleyball captain and I'm a peer leader.
I'm Brett Corman. I'm a junior and I'm a club president.
And let me go to the administrators and teachers in the back who are supporting these students, have been working with them as well. We'll start with Ms. Lappel.
Kim LaFle, principal over at AC Criveter.
Tom Andriello, coordinator of the freshman mentor program.
Sheila St. Ange, advisor to the Sale at the middle school.
Ruben Torres, advisor to the student leadership board.
Steve Borneman, advisor to TA Roman.
Doug Carpenter, coordinator of the peer leadership program.
We have some folks hiding in the back, so a lot of stuff.
Chris Walsh, proud high school principal.
And I'm the assistant principal. I want to thank all the teachers and administrators who also work hard to support the students in these roles. So let's jump in and do this. They've never done all this together, so this is a little interesting. We're not sure how it's going to go, but it's okay. There's no wrong answer on this one, okay? So what does it mean to be a leader? What does it mean to be a leader? Go ahead, Zach.
I think the leadership and being a leader has a twofold kind of definition. I think the first is being a role model for others and wearing the hat of leadership in all facets, so not just in the area where one's a leader, whether that's at the student leadership board or as a TA, but just in all walks of interactions with others and maintaining the qualities that they embody. And I think the second important aspect of being a leader is having a passion and being able to run with that and convey that to others and share what you love.
I agree with Zach there. I know it's really a lot about your behavior, both in and out of the classroom or on the field, wherever, because you want to be that role model figure that people look up to. And I know as a senior mentor, when I'm just simply walking through the hallways and I just say hello to one of my freshmen, just you see their faces just light up and they're so happy, like, oh my god, a senior's talking to me.
The 8th grader right over there too. See their face.
And other than that, just if you're, for example, out of town, just say in CVS, somewhere it's local store, and if somebody sees you behaving badly, then that's going to reflect badly on you and the program that you represent. And just making sure you have the best behavior at all times really going to display those qualities that make them look up to you.
Yeah, kind of like what they were saying, I think being a leader is kind of just being confident in like what you believe is right. And a lot of times, it's not what other people believe is right, but I think if you're confident in yourself and you're confident in what you believe, I think it makes it easier for you to be a leader.
Skylar, in your role, have there's ever been a time where you had to sort of make a decision or do something that either you weren't sure was right or others might not have at first?
Ah, yeah, definitely. There was like, especially like little things, just like when people talk behind other people's backs, it's, it's just sometimes people feel uncomfortable in order to like, you know, stand up for that student just because they just, everyone else is doing it, so you don't feel like it's your turn to like step in and defend that person. But, you know, it's the right thing to do, although it may not be the easiest thing to do.
So, in case, for board members who don't know what our peer leader program is, could our peer leader, Skylar, Alex, I know there's some others, could you explain what the peer leader program is at the high school?
Uh, yeah. It's pretty much, we have a bunch of seniors who are selected as peer leaders, and we teach a sophomore class, health class. And it's, it's a lot of, you know, just like, you know, healthy habits and how like certain ways to live your life, being healthy. And it's also just like connecting with the students, too. It's more than just, you know, like an information class where you just like write stuff down. It's kind of like, you know, getting comfortable with your students and making them feel comfortable where they can talk to you if they need advice on anything.
Yeah, and it's really great because it doesn't just stop at the classroom. Like, when I leave the classroom, whether I see them in town or at a social event, I always like, it's an opportunity for me to always look out for my kids, and my kids to always have a friendly face. So, it kind of teaches them healthy habits out of the classroom also.
Yeah, it's like building off what they both said, like math and all the, like the core curriculums are great, and like you learn a lot of stuff in there, but peer leadership is the only class where you'll learn life skills and how to, even though math might help you going on, these life skills will help you for the future forever. So, I think it's really important for the sophomores.
Do they come to you for advice when they feel like they can't come to an adult?
Yeah, definitely. I've received texts, phone calls, even just in the hallway, people have come up to me and told me what's going on. And it's really nice because they get an older person's perspective, somebody who's out, who's out of maybe like their core friend group or somebody that they wouldn't usually interact with, so they get a new perspective.
And also, Carp tells a really interesting story to the peer leaders every year, where there's actually a kid who wanted to talk to someone, and he thought, they wanted to talk to a teacher, but it's like moved him out of the way and wanted to talk to a peer leader. And it's just, it's something like nice to like, you know, feel like that comfort with a student like that. Sometimes they can't talk to an adult, they feel like, you know, they can't like say what they want to say to an adult. I feel like we're in a great position.
Have the peer leaders ever had a situation where a student has come to them, confided them, and you realize that maybe this is a little above your pay grade? And you had to go elsewhere or get somebody else's assistance in answering your questions?
And to that point, can you talk about the training that you get to be these, these peer leaders?
Yeah, so we definitely know what to do in case that happens. I personally haven't had that happen to me, but in the morning, we have, peer leaders two periods. We have our teaching period and then our period in the morning where we learn about what we're going to be teaching and how to deal with students. And in that period, we usually go over what to do in certain situations, and we go over specific scenarios, and we like role play. So, we are really equipped to deal with any situation.
How do you become a peer leader?
You, just like any other like senior leadership program, you apply the end of your junior year, and then there's a selection process and interview that you go through.
What prompted you to apply? Was it your experience having a peer leader, or was it another reason?
Uh, I think it's both. I had a great like connection with my peer leaders when I was a sophomore, and I think it was definitely a really important role. And I also wanted to be a senior leader, and I really liked what, what peer leader all really meant. So, when I was thinking about senior leadership, peer leaders just really stood out to me.
I want to ask the volleyball captain a question over there. You're a senior?
Yeah.
Okay, good answer. As a senior, when you have freshmen coming out for the team, do you get involved as a leader with the freshmen? And if so, how do you see your role in dealing with freshmen as, both as a leader and also as a teammate?
Well, I really tried to connect with the freshmen this year when we were split up during tryouts. I made sure that every freshman on the team was comfortable, and that volleyball's a very mental sport, so you have to be very loud, and I tried to make them feel very comfortable throughout the tryout process. And most of them are on the JV team, and I made sure to make a connection with the JV team, and I made sure to like just do things with them that made them feel comfortable at, with the program to continue it and...
Did you, as a captain, did you build off of the leadership skills that you learned from prior captains?
Yeah, I think especially last year, a lot of our, like our captains addressed certain issues with the team. I think that really taught me how to address certain issues, especially also as a peer leader. I have to be able to address issues with the students in case, like I have to be a friend along with a teacher, so it helps me balance things like that.
Did the varsity players take on the junior varsity players as like big sister, little sister? How did...
Yeah, we had younger sisters, so every home game, we would cook something for them. And so, that got you to connect with them and bring them into the program and keep them comfortable with us, so they don't, we don't have to be so like scary towards them, just like a friend.
Is it similar with the football team?
Yes, of course. Mr. Carpenter actually assigned every senior one freshman, so it was more one-on-one approaches, and we were able to just, it was a lot like the mentor program, that we were just a mentor to them, and we, you know, stayed after practice and taught them the plays that they didn't know, just always there for them and just being a role model for them. I know for me, I would, whenever we had our team dinners, I would try to look and try to sit with the freshmen rather than my senior friends, just to be someone they can be more comfortable around, they can open up to me.
Michael, when you played JV, or I don't know if you had a freshman team back then, but with you...
Yeah.
Right. When you played JV, did you have a person like that?
Uh, there were, there were definitely some older role models, and I definitely built off of what they did for me, and just going through everything that they shaped me into, I think that definitely had an impact on my leadership.
So, I'm wondering, you've talked a little bit about what leaders do. We're getting a sense of being a role model and guiding others. What are some other things, I'll ask this in two ways, what are you, what are other things you do as leaders, or if you're involved in particular activities, like if you're a TA, what are some of the things you're working on currently that take leadership skills?
I guess I'll start out with a quick answer. I think one thing you need to do as a leader, when you're in a club or even like a sports team, when you're with a freshman, is you need to make them comfortable in the atmosphere that they're in. So, I run track, and I work with a lot of freshmen, and I'm a mentor, so I'm already really comfortable talking to the freshmen. And I had a couple of freshmen this year who were very shy, and this was their first year running, so they didn't really know any teammates. So, I kind of went out of my way, asked them how they're feeling after every time we ran like a brutal race and everyone was dying and panting. So, I asked them how they are, how are things going, helping with them with their form. So, I'd say a big thing is make, make them comfortable.
To build off of what Michael said, I think Drew was going to probably say the same thing, because we're both on student leadership board. One of the things that we talk about is creating a judgment-free environment so that everybody is comfortable voicing their own opinions. And that just helps so much to create leaders, because if you're comfortable in the environment that you're in, you're able to kind of like walk to the beat of your own drum and voice your own opinion, which I think is an important quality to have in a leader. So, if we could like emulate that kind of in the rest of our district, in our high school and middle school, I think it would help a lot in the process of building leaders.
Certainly, and I'd like to build off both their points in saying that I think it's very important to get this balance of both being, making sure you're, the people around you are comfortable, but also being able to encourage them to, you know, pursue their own activities, because I feel like if you personally coddle them too much, some of the shyer people around you might not be willing, they're, they're, they might not participate as often. And certainly, when I was presenting to the freshmen as a, we, as a student leader, we went in and we talked about them, and certainly, some of them were a bit more shy. So, we had to make sure that they were both comfortable, but also, we had to encourage them, and certainly the more shy ones, to be able to voice their own opinion and not get, you know, overcrowded by the others.
Alexandra, what do you think about this?
Um, so I'm an AP computer science TA, and a big thing for me is inspiring passion and motivating my students, because computer science can be a very frustrating subject, and I experienced it last year taking the AP course. And when you run a code, many times, there are errors that you have to like kind of debug and spend hours solving. It's funny, because Devin's a county TA, which is also one of my students. And so, Devin can firsthand tell you about debugging.
Exactly.
So, for me, a big thing is sort of being there to motivate my students and obviously help them, but not put too much, you know, pressure for them to like solve the problem or doing it for them. So, I think for me, being a leader is that sharing my passion for computer science, because the feeling they get when they successfully compile a code or run and create a tic-tac-toe game on Java is like the best feeling ever. And so, witnessing that through my students provides me with a lot of godification.
In addition to all these great relationships that you have with, whether you're a mentor or on a team and, and you're looking after somebody, do you also feel like you have the ability to have impact on the broader school community? So, if on student leadership, you decide that something doesn't seem right, like how do you turn that into action and try to, you know, influence the school community broadly? Let me ask our eighth grade students, who I think can speak about the fraud, you know, some of the things you're doing through Sale.
Yeah, well, sometimes when you, like we're, we're firsthand, so we know like what the problems are in our school, so we bring a problem to Sale, and then we think, we like maybe sometimes we make surveys to see what the whole school thinks about it, and then we find ways we can solve those problems. And like obviously, there are some, some people think some things, other things, so we have to compromise, and that's like a huge thing in leadership.
So, how do you compromise?
Well, you can take like two ideas and put them together, or you can like nicely put like your idea out there and say, well, you think yours is right and theirs is wrong, or like, but like help, like not like meanly.
Yeah, it'd be nice. And you could also like persuade them to like go to your side or your idea and act like better benefit the whole group then, because then you're like all compromising on one idea.
Do you have some techniques you use to come, to persuade?
Well, you have to say like, I like that idea, but, and then...
We have to use that in our matrix.
That's usually not my style.
That's very surprising.
It's a little like a soccer player, a mentor.
They have a tool.
Just to ask the TAs, do you feel you work collaboratively with the, with your teachers, but also feel a sense of autonomy? Because you're working with peers times, do you feel like you can help, or does it ever feel challenging to, to talk to friends, or how does that work for you guys?
So, as a TA, I work in a classroom with four teachers. So, we have Mr. Bornman Spud in and my co-TA, which is another one of them. And it's kind of great that we have so many teachers in the room, and so we all try to work together to give our students the best opportunity to learn and become passionate about chemistry, but more than just teaching them chemistry, we also want to teach them how to be good leaders as well. I mean, the point of this meeting is to see how we can improve leadership in the entire community. And so, even though I've been, all the kids in this room are deemed leaders, that doesn't mean that all the students outside of this room are followers. We have to encourage other students to have an attitude of leadership as well. So, Ally's my TA, and if she teaches me something, I'm going to do my best to teach it to another kid, even though I'm not a TA myself. And as a TA, I'm going to teach a student to then help another kid. It's all about this ripple effect that can really help the community as a whole, and so I think this meeting can really help us direct our ideas towards not just focusing on the kids in this room, but also broadening it to the elementary school and high school.
I think one of the other great things about being a TA is that you get to combine being a teacher and being a peer. So, a lot of the kids that we work with are one year younger than us, and some of them are two years younger. So, there's a really great balance between acting as friends and role models outside of the classroom and also within the classroom. And I've found through my experience, working one-on-one with kids during office hours or even just helping them during labs, that these kids have grown to respect me, so that when I'm in a situation where I'm standing in front of the classroom, everybody's quiet and paying attention to everything that I'm teaching and ready to learn.
Do you like that?
I do like that. I think it's a great feeling that something that I am saying is being written down by other people and can help them improve academically, and maybe they can learn something about me also as a role model.
I think what's really great about all of these leadership programs is that it gives students kind of an idea and role model to aspire to become. So, I know a lot of my students in AP computer science, for example, might want to become a TA next year. So, I think all of these programs are great, great ways that Byram Hills sort of utilizes to really encourage and reward and celebrate the leaders at Byram Hills.
I definitely agree with Ally, and I think that one of the most important ways that us leaders can work to make more leaders in the Byram Hills community is by inspiring the people that we lead and trying to give them the same passion that we feel in our subjects. So, I'm the president of the Unibook Club, which is a club that uses 3D printing to create devices for physically challenged people throughout the community. And one of the big challenges that I usually face is that the freshmen who come into my club don't feel like they're adequate to actually be there, because they hear the words engineering, they hear the words 3D printing, and they might have not done that well in their math classes or in their science classes, and they don't feel like they belong in the club, and it's our job to tell them, no, you do. If you're interested in this, you can do it, and you just have to take hold of the opportunities that's there.
We haven't heard from you yet.
Yeah. What they were talking about is, I know as a freshman, I really strove to be the kind of people that my senior mentors were, the kind of esteem that like the mentorship program was held to at that point in time, that's something we always looked towards, and it kind of motivated me to be that kind of person all throughout high school. And I think leadership is really built, it's not something you can achieve overnight, but it's something you can definitely strive towards and work towards. And I know what Michael was talking about earlier, like it's the moments that people don't see, which also builds to that. I think that's a really important part, and doing those sort of like little things that you think that, like nobody will see, they really impact who you are as a person and really build that character of leadership.
I have a question for you all, and maybe you don't want to answer it, which is okay. But leaders aren't always perfect. Sometimes leaders slip off the pedestal. Maybe it's happened to you, maybe it's happened to a leader that you work with. What tools have you used to explain to your students, whatever, that leaders are human? Has that ever occurred to you, where someone said, hey, this guy, this girl, guy is supposed to be a role model, but look what I heard, or look what they did? Has that ever occurred? And if so, how did you handle it?
That has definitely occurred with me in my 3D printing club, because we have, obviously, have to make a lot of different models and prototypes to fit different situations. And I was working on one of our prototypes for about half a year, and one of the students in my club walked up to me and posed a new idea, and it was so much better than the one I'd been working on for six months or anybody else. And like I had to, I had to give that up, and a lot of them were like, you're the president, shouldn't you have the best idea? And I was like, no, you know, I'm just here to lead you, but you guys may have more innovative ideas than me, you know, and it's my job and your job to help determine which will help the most people, not what will be the best for the first.
That's real leadership.
You used the Sale model. I like, I like mine, but yours is better.
I also think that like in that kind of like situation, it's kind of like their turn to maybe like try and be a leader themselves, you know, because like everyone messes up, that's just stuff that happens, but then someone else steps in, you're kind of just, they're motivated now to become a leader, and that's kind of like what we want to do.
Adding on to what Brent said, I think what defines best leaders are those who can sort of take and absorb sort of the best out of everyone around them and apply it to themselves and use it to propel themselves forward. Because many times, as an AP computer science TA, I find myself in situations where other students write more efficient codes, or I'm up there making a presentation, and someone calls me out on an error in my code. And in those situations, it's kind of awkward, and I have to sometimes like agree with them, but these situations make me a better TA and make me a better computer scientist. And so, I definitely think like what Brent said, using other people's sort of criticism to make you better is a big thing on leadership.
This is a very impressive group of students.
Thank you.
It is very impressive, and so I want to ask you now, as we start segueing to how we can grow as a district, I want to think about your preparation to be a leader. How are you prepared to be a leader, and were there any ways that Byron Hills helped prepare you for the skills that you need to be a leader?
I just wanna, I think Byron Hills does a fantastic job preparing us as leaders, because I know I've used this example with multiple people, and I've had conversations about this, how we almost have a three-step process to our senior year by watching leaders for three years straight. With freshman year, you watch a mentor for half a semester, give you a lesson every day, and watch them be confident in the classroom, talk to you, interact with you. Sophomore year, you watch peer leaders teach you healthy decisions for half a year. And then your junior year, you can, you have KEMTAs, and they teach you for the entire year. They're helping you every step of the way. So when we start handing out, or when the teachers start handing out those applications, you've already had three years of almost preparation of leadership. And even if you don't become a student leader, you can take some of those things that they've taught you, and like we talked about, the ripple effect.
And I think, I think that a common misconception is that leaders have to be the smartest person in the room, or the best athlete on the team. And Byron Hills recognizes that that's not always the case, and a leader isn't defined by, you know, how, how well they are at academics, but how they're respected in the hallways at school with their peers and their teachers. And they really do a great job in the selection process of picking the mentors and the peer leaders and the TAs, because they recognize that that's not always the case. So then we have such great leaders to look up to, such great role models to follow.
Well, Madison and Sidney, since you're sitting there absorbing all this, does this encourage you to take on additional leadership roles as you move on to the high school?
Yeah, definitely. I also, to add on to what we said before, I think it's very good that Byron Hills has you start young as a leader, because like we got introduced to SAIL in sixth grade, and that's like, you can keep like building off of that, and even if you don't make that connection that you want to do something in sixth grade, there's more opportunities like later on.
And SAIL has like, I'm sorry, but isn't SAIL, do you tell us has like fifty units?
Yeah, it's like expanding law.
Yeah, that's the student government.
That's great.
That's, and that's sixth through eighth grade, is that right?
Wow. So, you know, there are sixth graders now who are becoming part of SAIL. If you could tell them anything about your experience, what do you think would be some of the others?
I would, I would say like be confident, like don't be afraid to like voice an opinion or an idea you have, because like the sixth graders are here first, not first, they're new to the school, so they have like a certain perspective that maybe we didn't or we don't, so it could really help us.
Yeah, also, it's okay to be wrong. Like if you don't know an answer, like what's the, there's nothing terrible that's gonna happen, you need to go like outside of your comfort zone.
So in your student government, anyone can answer this, but I'm curious with the eighth grade, you have to work with the adults, and you have to work with the principal and the assistant principal. Is that scary to you? Has it been scary to work with adults in your role, and has it ever been comfortable or ugly? How do you overcome that?
At the beginning, it's a little uncomfortable, but then once you like get into the conversation, it's like they're people too, it's not intimidating.
Yeah, like after sixth grade, I began to know Ms. Laffle, and Ms. St. Ange, and then Mr. Ancona now, like better, so I'm not like afraid to talk to them, like share an opinion or idea anymore.
And is there something you can share that you're working on now as a student government?
Yeah, we're working on wellness, actually, and that's like, it's helping students like become more mindful and like stress-free, because it is very stressful being a student. And we also want to have like them like, I don't know how to explain it.
Yeah.
Just finding ways to...
To make like the school a better place. Yeah. And like a healthy, safe zone like environment, so they could like talk to friends and like do homework and just like be a nice spot for them.
I think like that's the exact thing we're doing in the high school too with Wellness Day. And I think that whole transition between they're doing it at the middle school and then even though you come to the high school, the same initiatives are happening. It means that it's a whole district-wide thing, it's just not school by school, we're all connected, and we're still like doing everything together.
Football, basketball, volleyball, and they're track captain here also, I heard? You were in that.
Sure, yeah.
Maybe this is a loaded joke. In some schools, there's a mark demarcation between the athletic leaders and the non-athletic leaders, and there can be friction that arises in schools because of that. Have you seen any of that at Byron Hills? And I'll open it up to anybody, I'm just picking on these guys and girls first, because I know they, they announced that they were leaders in this sport, but is, is there any friction, or is there any...
Difference.
Difference, class status, as it were, between athletic leaders and let's say academic peer leaders, chemistry TAs? Do you see any of that?
Personally, I would say there's no real friction. I think, also has to do with, most of us here in this room are both captains and in-school leaders as well, but we all want the same goal, we want to create the leaders of the future generation and do that.
Well said.
I'm completely satisfied.
But in order to do that, we have to work collectively, and to achieve that goal, we can't just, you know, oppose each other, and we all have to just come together and really unionize against that.
Are there any leadership opportunities that any of you feel that the district is missing? Any opportunities for additional leaders, different programs?
Well, I always wondered why we didn't have a student government in the high school, and I'm sure there's a clear reason for this, but I think that would be very helpful for the students to have that and be able to voice their opinion in that type of outlet. So I think it could be something to consider. I know a lot of other schools have student governments too, so.
Yeah, just really quick to kind of hop onto that. I'm part of a club called Student Parliament, and it's kind of like, the one thing that's really missing from Student Parliament, because our mission is kind of what a student government is, but equal opportunity, but I think in order, if we really want to offer those opportunities to new kids, we would really need to start advertising and popularizing either like Student Parliament or just any type of more broader student government. Whether it has like a president or not, I feel like student government is really needed as like a, a club.
Also, I'm on the Principal Student Advisory Committee, which is, Mr. Walsh meets with a few kids from the school once like every few weeks, and we just talk about issues or things that kids are, that we are hearing through the hallway, things that we want to improve, or things that other people have come to us and said, like, "Why don't we have this?" Or "Why don't we do that?" And it's a good connection that we have between student and Mr. Walsh, because he's like able to hear things that, you know, a student might not necessarily go to an administrator to say.
Are all the kids in that also in, in this group? Are they all also leaders in the leadership programs?
A few of them are, I don't, I think I'm the only one here right now, but I think a few of them are, are in leadership.
But it includes other kids that aren't?
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a question, actually, based on what you were saying before. You were talking about how Byron Hills does a good job of, of picking students based on more than just how they're doing academically, you know, how they interact with us, other students in the hallway, and it sort of made me think about a popularity contest, and how do you stop this from being a popularity contest, or is there a difference between a leader and somebody who's popular, and what's the difference, and how, like, how is this different from?
Well, I definitely do not think that it is a popularity contest. I think that the teachers do a great job of recognizing who, there's, there's a difference between being popular and being popular among your peers. There's a difference between people liking you and looking up to you, and then just being known as popular. And I think that the student, the teachers do a great job of deciphering who, who, because they, there's a, there's a strenuous process, there's interviews, applications, letters of recommendation, and like teachers also, they know, like they hear, they hear the conversations in the hallway, they, they can recognize who, who is really liked among their peers and who not so much. So I think, I don't think it's at all a popularity contest. I really genuinely believe that the people that are picked to be leaders are actual leaders in the school.
I think also that another part of leadership that you don't really take into consideration as much is that leaders a lot of times have to make unpopular decisions. I know for myself, like when I'm teaching my students, sometimes they want to have just a fun period of playing like this thing called the yoga ball, they just want to like go and run around to the gym.
They'll do that.
Yeah. Or maybe they want to, you know, just talk to their friends all period, but like it's really important to like get the lessons that we're teaching them, because they're things that they really can apply like in their everyday life, and they're really going to need throughout high school, especially because it's coming from people who have experienced it themselves. So being able to kind of, have to say like, "Listen, guys, I know this is what you want to do, but like we have to, this is really important to do," and kind of being able to like relay that to them is difficult at times, but it's really necessary.
And you're also, to take on a bunch of these leadership roles, I know that you then, there's certain classes that you can't take as well, or you have to come in very early to do like morning class. Has that, do you feel gotten in the way at all from wanting to take on leadership roles for other kids, or was it a hard decision for you?
I feel like everybody who really wanted a leadership role made it work. I haven't heard of anybody who was like, "I have to take this class, so I can't be a mentor," because I think when you're a leader, you really prioritize being in the leadership role, and I think it's, we make it such an honor here at Byron Hills that nobody would ever pass it up for any class, because I think that all of us think that, like if you ask me what my most important class is in my schedule, I would say peer leader, and I think that's because I'm making the most difference in that class, and that's the class that is helping me grow the most, and like that's the class I'm going to use the most, so I don't think that really is a, an obstacle.
When you, when you... Kathy, you wanted to say something? You about to jump in?
Oh, yeah. No, I definitely agree with what Alex was saying, just saying how like, I have to take seven AM econ now, uh, next semester, because in order to fit peer leader into my schedule, but, I mean, I, I really feel like it's something that I've like learned a lot from a class, although like I may be taking, like supposedly teaching sophomore, sophomores, I really feel like I'm learning just as much as they are. Maybe in a different aspect of what we're learning, but I really think it's an important class, and like getting up an hour early is, that's like worth taking a class.
I agree with Skylar, because I think that in some ways, taking on this leadership position as a class teaches you more valuable skills than an academic class may teach you, and I think that learning to communicate well with your peers and serve as a role model to others is something that you could really use in your everyday life and in your future.
Madison, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, and like, as a leader, you have to take healthy risks, so it's like beneficial on the end, and then leaders will follow, I mean, followers will follow you, and it's like...
How old are you? Come up with this stuff.
Byron Hills is a good education.
You're doing a great job.
Great family.
Can you explain to Mr. Schulman what a healthy risk is?
A risk, like a healthy risk is something that is good and beneficial in the end, and it's a risk that it can be out of your comfort zone at some times.
Give me an example.
So like, for sale, we're doing a recycling committee, and you can be like a recycling monitor, and you get to like wear a hat, and you tell kids like where to put it in each bin, and for some kids that may be out of their comfort zone, like telling their friends, like, "Put it in that bin, you're wrong." But it's healthy, because you're benefiting the school, and it's like recycling system.
There you go.
Be comfortable in that role.
Do you have your hat with you?
Any other advice you would like to give me or give our Board of Education in ways that we can make sure we're creating leadership for everyone in the district?
So going back to what Anyela initially said, one of the things that really differentiates this whole district, and it's going to really help us make everybody in our grade a leader, is the amount of opportunity it offers, because where there's opportunity, every single person can be a leader, they just have to find the area that they're passionate about and where they can rise above. And I think that one of the biggest problems that we face in not making everybody a leader is that sometimes people are discouraged from following their passions because of the grades they receive. I know that firsthand, because I run, obviously, like a sort of pseudo-engineering club, and a lot, I, I see a lot of people who are really interested in 3D printing and just feel like it's above them, because they're getting Bs or Cs in math or science, and feel like they're not adequate enough. So, and it's sort of sad to see like the grade dominate what their passion is.
What can you do as a leader to change that?
Well, I don't really know if it's as much as a leader as much as a great thing. I know I was talking to Dr. Kultnecker about this earlier. There's a lot of like experimental grading going on now, a lot more project-based assignments, and I think that really allows people to sort of rise to the occasion and become leaders, and also with like standard-based grading, where it's not just the grade that matters, but it's really, you get to take risks and you get to experiment with what you believe.
Yeah, just building off of that, I think the skills that students should graduate with involve speaking in front of peers, collaborating with peers, speaking to teachers or people with authority that they might not be able to muster up the courage to do so. And so these skills, a lot of times, you don't get through tests. So like Brent was saying, I think moving towards a direction where it's more project-based grading, more working groups, is, will allow students to kind of gain these leadership qualities.
Also, like going back to the teacher connection with students, in SAIL, we have USA, and it's a kid from every team, and then from some like committees, and we come together, and basically we just talk about, we pick an issue, and then we go back to the committee or the, or like our teachers, and we tell them about it, because it's good to have like other people's opinions and different perspectives on issues, so then we can bring it all together.
So bring a lot of different perspectives and things.
For some advice that we could give, I would say, one of the main things that I learned about leadership is that it's not learned overnight, it's something that takes a very long time to develop, public characteristics, and one of the main ideas that I had that we could partially do as a community was, I know how we have the DARE program, where I think every student in this room could agree with me, it would, it's really solidified in our heads how dangerous it is for drug and alcohol abuse, and I feel like if we created a program like that, where we could just solidify and teach the characteristics of leadership all throughout elementary school and in middle school, and just teaching students right from wrong, maybe testing public speaking, just the basic qualities that they're going to need, so that we could really sharpen their minds into what it really takes to be a leader, and that way we could form them into much better leaders.
What do you or teacher have to do with the program?
I have to say, you guys are very impressive, but what, the things you've had to say have been impressive, but the most impressive thing is how comfortable you are speaking to us. I mean, this could potentially be a very intimidating situation, and you guys are very...
I have a question for anybody who's on student leadership. You know, we talked about listening to, do what?
We talk about listening to understand rather than to respond, which is an extremely important lesson, not only in school, but outside of school, and something that I hope to take with me for the rest of my life, and something that I really hope other people try to understand. Do you want to explain it?
Yeah, um, when we learn listening to understand, we compare it with listening simply to like listen. When you're listening to listen, you aren't listening to simply, you know, communicate that, oh, you're sort of paying attention. You don't fully understand what the other person is saying at times, but if you listen to fully understand, and for example, in our most recent meeting, we gained this idea of pretend as though every person you're having a conversation with has something mind-blowing to tell you, and if you do that, and I certainly have been the last few weeks, you learn so much more than like about, like each sentence they're saying, if you pretend as though there's some like gem of information, you really like are able to communicate with the other person so much better than that.
Yeah, we watched a TED Talk, and they brought up a great point that, like so many times, if you overhear a conversation and nobody's really listening to the other person, so it's basically just two people saying things that don't relate at all, because they're just, they're just listening to respond, and the whole time, the next, the other person is telling them something, they're creating their response in their head, and by the end of the conversation, nobody knows what the other person had to say. But if we can try to listen more to understand rather than to make an argument for our point, then we'll be able to compromise more, we'll be able to understand the differences throughout the world.
If you want to take the Acela train ride a couple hours down south of Washington, I'd be able to use your wisdom.
I asked that question because I, I see that that's exactly what this group did tonight. You, nobody was just speaking. You were listening to what somebody else said, and you were commenting on what they were saying, and you were building that. And, you know, this is the whole process of building leadership, and many people here have not even been trained in listening to understand, but it is something that you're doing naturally in your leadership roles.
And some total of the impact that you've made in high school and middle school with all these different aspects of leadership that you've been talking about is really outstanding, and we spent a lot of time talking all year to leadership from an administrative standpoint, and teachers who are leaders, and they do a lot of great things for the school, but the things that you guys are doing shouldn't be underestimated, and you clearly got to this point because you were motivated and you wanted to make a positive impact in other people's lives. And if you take that and you keep it in the back of your mind and in the front of your mind as you go to college and afterwards, in whatever it is that you're passionate about, I think you'll, you'll do great things, that's clear.
And you're representing a lot of other people. I know people who are here from student leadership are representing about eighty students in the student leadership board. Coaches, how many teams do we have, and how many, you know, how many captains are on these teams? And, you know, there are multiple people standing behind you that you're representing today.
So, let's wrap it up, I promise I get you out of here in an hour.
No, they're not going home.
It's only been fifty minutes, but let's end on an aspirational note. So part of leadership is shaping the future. What are your hopes for the future? That's a big question, I don't know what I mean by it, but we'll see what... I suppose we need that right now, but you can answer it or not answer it, but if it makes sense to you.
Um, I guess I'll kind of open it up, I'm gonna kind of...
You understand?
Yeah, I think I do.
Thank you.
Uh, the day I walk off the stage of graduation, I want to know that I made an impact on the high school, I want to know that I helped my freshman class, helped my team, helped everyone else with whoever I interacted with, I don't know. whoever I interacted with, I don't know. But I'd say like the whole point of like us being leaders, the whole aspiration we have, the end goal of all of this is to kind of shape who's behind us and hopefully make a positive impact on everything.
Amazing, Michael.
Thank you.
We spoke a lot during our total leadership meetings with all of the leadership members about lollipop moments, which I described as moments when you might have a profound impact on somebody's life, but you have no idea that it happened, only the person that you impacted knows about that. And I can only hope that through many classes of teaching as a TA and hours on the student leadership board and even just being a student in the school that I could have that kind of impact on somebody else.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Um, I agree with what Alexa said and so I guess this kind of goes back to Mr. Schulman's first question before about the friction between, if there's friction between like athletic leaders and academic. And so all senior leaders, that all senior leaders met, um, over the summer, at the beginning of the summer, and we had a workshop where we talked about lollipop moments, the idea of have, doing something so small that you don't remember it, but it could have changed someone's life or just have a minimal impact. And I think that my goal, and I think I speak on behalf of all the leaders here moving forward for the future, is to leave behind an impact that can have an effect on someone. And it's not just about if you're a TA, an academic TA, about being able to teach someone chemistry or computer science, but it's about motivating them and having them be able to take on the qualities that you give.
I know like the mentors, in the summer, we did a few, um, mentor sessions that we did kind of like training days and we were asked at one point to break away from mentor partnerships and, um, create a goal for your class, like at the end, like what do you want to say you've accomplished? And me and my partner created, it was something, it's a little funky, it was like to be able to perform like a ballet at the Met without ever taking a dance class or something like that. Um, but really like the, the message behind it was that everybody in our class would leave like comfortable with their Byron Hills community and with really courageous mindset to go out and try things that maybe they're, um, haven't tried before, but it could be something that they would feel really passionate about. And I think igniting that passion and doing it in a way that, um, students feel really fearless going out in their, um, high school experience and you know, even starting like earlier than that is really important for building the next generation of leaders.
And also with the whole mentor program, I know Michael was talking about earlier how it's a three-step plan and how we have the mentors, the peer leaders and the camp TAs off to our high school that shape us. And I know that's definitely true because if you were to ask me in eighth grade and told me I was going to be a leader someday and that I was going to be a mentor, I would have said, you're crazy because I was a very shy kid and I never thought that I would be a confident individual that would be a leader and role model for others. But I think that the mentor and peer leader, the camp TA, all the programs are really what's solidified in my mind and just opened me up as a person and allowed me to get the characteristics that I have today. And I think my ultimate goal is to leave that same impact on everyone else.
I think you have. It's amazing. Um, before we close, let me just acknowledge again, the teachers and administrators sitting behind you who told me earlier that if they don't have to say anything tonight, they did their job. So a lot of work went on behind the scenes and a lot of preparation, uh, to develop this group and I do want to acknowledge them too.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So I hope you can go right to bed when you get home.
Hardly. You're the heart and the engine. Many of you still want to take this time.
They're chosen by other students, I believe.
Yes, okay. Let's, let's get back to our business. That was wonderful. And, uh, that takes us to number 11, unfinished business. And we've got a bunch of second reads and some first reads, so I think I'm going to separate them. Well, it's, second read, students didn't have any changes, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve as a second read, policy 4750, promotion and retention of students, 5460, child abuse, malt treatment or neglect in a domestic setting, and 8505, meal charge. Those are all, uh, second read. Can I have that motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, um, no changes, any other comments, anybody wants to make on these or questions? All right. We're ready for the vote then. All in favor? And then can I have a motion as a first read? Should I, we'll do these all separately. Uh, policy, can I have a motion to approve as a first read, policy 1741, homeschooling?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Tim, you want to?
Sure.
Get a comment?
Sorry, I'm getting.
That's quite all right.
Yeah, so the homeschooling, um.
I could even talk about that.
Yeah, that's fine. The homeschooling, we, we brought that up again because it was a clarification. By the state on the policy that students in intramurals can, um, homeschool students cannot participate in intramurals as well as interscholastic. We had our policy said that you could participate in intramurals.
Oh, and you said that that's a state?
Yeah, it's from the state regulation, so we had to clarify that. Um, and we also discussed at the policy committee, um, just the, the, the general policy, that it's a district decision whether or not homeschool students can participate in other extracurricular activities where they're not representing the district. That's part of the regulation is you can't be representing the district as a homeschool. So like participating on the debate team where you're actually representing it. But other clubs like being part of the student leadership board or one of the other clubs you heard about, homeschool children could participate if we decide as a district to allow that. We have done that in the past. We've only had one instance in the last 10 years that I know of, homeschool student asking to be part of a club. And that was a student who had been homeschooled, came into the district for a while and went back to homeschool. He was part of that club to begin with. Um, and there were no issues with it. She knew people, felt comfortable and it was, it was fine. So we felt as a policy committee that there doesn't seem to be any reason why not to do that. There are taxpayers and why not let them be part of the community as well?
Do we have a big percentage of homeschool students in that?
Yeah. We have five families who homeschool with a total of eight children. And that's actually a high number. That's usually it's less than.
So, any other questions or comments on that? Okay, all in favor for first read? Okay, and then can I have a motion to approve as a first read, 2160, code of ethics? Uh, can I have a motion to?
Some move.
Second? Okay, and what about code of ethics, anything we need to?
So the code of ethics, um, one, this came up because, um, this vote was recommending to put in some item about, um, opportunities to disclose matters that were discussed in executive session. You could do that if the board determines that you wanted to divulge something or say something that was discussed in executive session that was allowed to be discussed in the public. So that is, um, item number three in there. That talks about it. So we put that piece in. Basically, this code covers the municipal codes and it uses a lot of the same language in the municipal code around conflicts of interest and ethics. And it's direct language from that municipal policy.
We had looked at this policy earlier this year. I think the idea is just, you know, disclosure, reiterating, um, where board members might have conflict of interest that the disclosures made and, and I don't think there were any other major changes here.
Any other comments? All in favor? First read? Okay, and can I have a motion to approve as a first read, 2330, which is executive session?
Some move.
In a second?
Similar to the previous policy, this was disclosing matters, discussing executive session was added as well as the motion to go into executive session. There was some clarification of language in that. If we do follow that, I look back at our past practices and our motion to go into executive session is covered by this policy. We, we adhere to the policy. This policy wasn't revised for a while, so we were missing some revisions. Um, and I had to, had to actually call this, but to get some advice on some of the things that they were not including that we had in our policy. So you'll see in the red line version, there's three items crossed out that were deleting that were previously in there. And I'll talk through each of those items and there's reasons why, if you want to know, I could go over each one, but it, it all makes sense.
That may require going to executive session.
It may require going to executive session. So just an example, number nine, which does matters of attorney-client privileges. That's already covered in item number four, which is discussion regarding proposed pending or current litigation. Also, attorney-client privileges is exempt from the open meeting laws and this whole executive session is, comes from the open meeting laws.
Well, you know, you know, truthfully, that's not really totally accurate, not, not what you just said, what you just said before that, um, where we, we said it covers the number four. I could see that we may want to discuss, for example, tax or shirari matters in executive session.
Right.
Which may not be the subject of pending litigation, but could, uh, down the road become, but it's something that the board may wish to discuss.
Exactly. So you're right, and that's why there's two reasons this book gave. One was some of that could be covered in the number four. The other one is that attorney-client privileges is exempt from open meeting laws, which means this whole policy is governed by the open meeting laws.
That's fine.
Since it's exempt from open meeting laws, um, you could talk about it in, in.
I, I just want to let the board know something that happened many years ago. We went to an executive session and we decided to do it at a place that was very nice. We went there and we realized it was actually not within the district. We, we went to meet and it was not in the district. It was, somebody had a place to go, so we went there, it was lovely. And someone said to me, hey, you know, we really shouldn't have done that because we met in wherever we met. And so we basically had to redo the executive session and just come in and just do it again. So it's a little.
Ira, is that when you guys flew down to Miami?
No, it's Vegas.
No, Michael.
District chat.
No, it was Cabo.
But it's like Camp David, like what, does it, is there a law that says it has to be in the district? Uh, it just works now?
That's right, yeah. It was just a little, uh, something we, we found out after the fact.
Right. We have to find it.
This policy is really balancing the public's right to know versus rights to.
No executive in Cabo.
Okay, any other comments on that one? Okay, all in favor, first read? Okay, and then can I have a motion to approve as a first read, policy 9700, staff development?
Sure. Um, just at the last meeting, we approved the professional development plan.
Was there a wait? Sorry, one second.
Some move.
So moved in a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the, the last meeting, we adopted the professional development plan and this is about professional development. This policy, we had to revise in 10 years and it's a complete rewrite. So regulations had changed a couple times in those 10 years and the professional development regulations are very different. It's basically a complete rewrite. However, this covers exactly what we did. We rapidly followed the regulations because every two years we revise our professional development plan. So this policy now.
Are you comfortable with this, Tim? I mean, this is something I really would look to you to kind of tell us the way to go on this.
Right, I'm very comfortable with it. This is exactly what we do and it also references PD plan in this policy and our PD plan really governs how we do professional development and I'm very confident that that covers the regulations.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other comments on that?
Thanks for your time in doing that. Whoever was, who was describing that? You?
Now he's not working on AP PR at this, at this moment.
Well, I thought it was well done.
All in favor? Fantastic. Thank you, it was great. Hey, and we have no new business, so that brings us right to staff reports and our superintendents. All right, we had a lot going on tonight, but I do have other things to talk about. I'd like to talk just briefly about the board's work at the board retreat. I have extensive notes for the board, but for the sake of the public to know that the board met for a retreat to review our committee and liaison positions and that March 27th, I will be presenting proposals that came out of that meeting. Some of the proposals are to combine certain liaison and committee positions, um, to increase our capacity with communications and to really look at, um, the charge for the budget committee and the communication that the budget committee will have. So we will talk more about that in March. We'll also listen at that time to any other committees that, um, board members may have researched from other districts that you think might be relevant to our work. So I look forward to a discussion later, but I did summarize the discussion for the board in our notes and just wanted the public to know we did that. Um, it's very important in supporting not only our board goals, but our educational philosophy to really reexamine those positions. And the next is our Wampus principals retirement. I know that we spoke about it, um, before and Robin, you had very nice things to say about Deb and about our guidance counselors at the high school. Regarding the principal's position, we are going to start advertising for that position in January and we will follow the same rigorous process that we used, uh, with the middle school principal position for this year and the high school principal for the year before and fore-chair and director positions that we filled within the past four years. It's an extensive interview process and it ends with a consultancy model where finalists spend a day in the district consulting with us on various questions, issues or problems that we have. So we could really see a breadth and depth to their thinking. So I am very confident with Byron Hills' reputation that we are going to have really great resumes coming our way. I look forward to that process. And also the Byron Hills Education Foundation annual appeal. I did send a video, uh, just yesterday, um, highlighting the annual signature grants for the district, starting with an indoor play space at Coleman Hill, an obstacle course at Wampus and a connection to Stanford University for the success challenge for sixth graders through 12th graders to really assess how students are perceiving their environment and their place in the environment and creating a blueprint for how we plan to look at the district and make changes for the future. The Byron Hills Education Foundation signature grant also includes modification of a wellness space at Crittendon and a wellness den at the high school. And I am happy to say that the signature grants really reflect our K-12 wellness initiative. So just to see the district at a juncture where the board and the faculty, staff and teachers and administration are moving in a wellness direction and the BHEF and the Deborah Yale Fund are looking to support that is pretty outstanding. That was wonderful. Great. There's, there's a lot to show, a lot to say here, which we're fortunate for. Next is the demographers report. The board is privy to that report, um, attached to our notes, but most importantly, you know, when we look at the demographers numbers, which said that we would be at 2,305 students, we were 47 students above that by the time we started school. And that does not mean it's not a good demographers report. It tells us a lot of really important information. It just means that at any given moment, we're susceptible to people moving into the district or moving out of the district. But what I liked about the report was that they showed us an historic period and a projection period. And when they described the historic period, they described that over the past five years, we have had a reduction of 293 students, um, in our K-12 enrollment. And that what they project in the next five years is a continued reduction of 135 students. So, given that, we have to take a very close look at these enrollment projections when we're considering staffing and when we're considering, um, our future for the students here. Two things that we take very seriously though, and we're paying particular attention to this year. One is our class size guidelines. We always stay within the guidelines, um, kindergarten through first grade guidelines of 18 to 22 students per class, but by the time you get to high school, um, you know, the numbers are much greater than that. By fifth grade, 22 to 25 students per class. So as we stay within the guidelines, what's most important to us is that we keep programs. My predecessor always used to say that he wanted the same experiences for an entering kindergarten student as a high school senior has. And we know that those experiences change, like we didn't know what STEAM was 12 years ago, but, um, that we want to continue to provide that. And I'm happy to say that last year, we doubled the STEAM electives at the high school and Tim in a few moments is going to talk about additional STEAM offerings for the 18, 19 school year. When we say additional offerings, we look to offset courses that might not have been keeping up with what we feel students really need at this time and really making a transition in the curriculum. So that was the demographers report and the last piece that I always like to end with is my, my great student highlights. We had, there's the vacuum, we had seven scholar athlete teams from New York State Public High School Athletic Association that were recognized. So scholar athlete teams mean that a minimum of 75% of the students on the team roster had a 90 average or above. Of those seven teams, field hockey, girls cross-country, boys cross-country, volleyball, boys soccer, girls soccer and girls tennis, they had team averages hovering around 93 each, which is really outstanding. So I wanted to highlight those student athletes, scholar athletes, who aren't here tonight. And also, we have really been hearing a lot of accolades for the science research program. I'm very proud of the work that they're doing there. And we have yet another student achievement tonight, the Neuroscience Research Prize National Finalists. So students who were selected as top national finalists for the American Academy of Neuroscientists Research for high school students. They annually award 15 students who have completed extraordinary work exploring the brain and nervous system through lab research. And we're proud of our following authentic science research students, Stella Lee, Jeremy Ma, Alexandra Remnitz, and Kylie Roslin. And they will move on to the next round, which will award four of the finalists an all-expense trip to the 70th Annual Meeting in Los Angeles where they will be able to present their work.
This is a high school.
It's ridiculous. It's so phenomenal.
Do we send faculty with them?
Four. Or board members?
Who accompanies them?
Yeah, so it's a trip that, in the past, we did have students go last year, and we did send a faculty member. You know, we could decide that it's a non-sanctioned trip where families may just go if they want to. That's something we're figuring out. It was our first time last year, so we didn't know if this would become a regular thing or not.
Wow.
We had four out of 15.
This is a good problem to have, isn't it?
Yeah, we're thinking that through a bit.
So I want to congratulate the students, but also the work of Stephanie Greenwald and Dr. Caroline Matthew and Megan Salamon in that class, and their dedication to these students and making sure that they have every opportunity that they can is pretty outstanding. I'm really proud of the program this year.
Amazing.
That's awesome.
It keeps getting better and better. It's impossible, but.
I know. And that is it for me.
Thank you. And our deputy superintendent.
Sure, I'm sorry, I don't feel I have one to keep talking.
Anything else to say after all that, Tim?
We want to hear it, Tim.
Just a few things that I think are important for our community to hear. First, Jen mentioned that, a couple of new STEAM-related courses. And last year, you know, we added four STEAM, which is in the high school, and we have two more being added. And these are coming out of the art department, and that was something we've been working on for several years, is what is the A represents STEAM, and how do we actually see that take place? So there's, in my packet, I described several courses that we're recommending for next year. Two in the arts, one is metal smithing and jewelry design. It's actually a design course. We learn the design process, learn 3D printing, mixed medium sculpture, and kids will use a design process to actually create three-dimensional design, specifically jewelry. And that's a couple of teachers at the high school that have an expertise in that area who do the amazing work. So that will incorporate design thinking, which is really amazing. The second course is sort of a reboot of a course we've had for a while called Electronic Music, and we're actually going to add then a second version. We've only had one, this is a semester course. We've designed a second follow-up course and renaming the course Student Music Production and Composition. So it's actually, students will write, record, produce music in a studio setting. So they're really going to learn to be engineers, as well as the creative aspect. So it's one of those courses that incorporate lots of skills, where you could be the creative person who's writing the music and playing the music, as well as the engineers that work behind the scenes that make it happen. Deepak's really excited, and I do want to commend Deepak for working with his teachers and thinking through some really authentic ways to get our art students really, like, being part of the STEAM initiative and hands-on, really authentic way. Second course, or third course then, related to global competency, is Investigating Music, which is a reboot of another course, which will really focus on global awareness and students investigating cultural traditions and the history of music, where students will create their, follow their own interest in music and do some research in that area. So that's related to global competency. So we're redesigning some of our courses in that one. Second quick announcement is just, I did write about it in my packet. We had a principal's coffee that Ms. Lappel added and Ms. Pellegrino to continue to communicate to families the shift in the mathematics pathways. So we're making every effort to make sure our parents are informed about it. In this one, we were specifically talking about the selection criteria. Parents asked amazing questions. We had 40 parents who attended that, in addition to Robin and Lori who attended as well. They were really great questions, very thoughtful questions, and a few parents I've been following up with who wanted to continue the dialogue, so I'm following up with them as well.
Any chance those were recorded?
That was not recorded. We didn't capture that now.
I just feel like we're not, we're missing the working parents, that audience who can't come to the principal coffees.
Right, so maybe we could think about continuing to communicate that.
I would have liked to come to that, and I couldn't.
It's a good reminder of just continuing to find ways.
Maybe at the next working parents meeting, we could do something like that.
Good point.
It was very, very well presented. They, I wish we had.
I know, me too.
Teachers presented so well.
Teachers actually engaged the parents in a task so they could see what math is like. And it was pretty powerful. And the teachers are so well spoken, and they really understand what we're doing. So listening to that, and parents come up to me and say, this is amazing, what teachers are doing, because once you see the teachers talk about it and actually articulate it, it gives you a lot of confidence as a parent.
It allowed us to see how you can collaborate in math, because we were all taught with the teacher in the front of the room.
Yeah.
And when they gave us that problem and we had to work around the table, it was really cool how everybody got to the same answer.
Yeah. And finally, tomorrow, our journalism students at the high school had put together a conference called Redefining Journalism. This is something I worked with Catherine Schu, our advisor, and two of the student editors who were both here tonight, talking to you. They didn't talk about that aspect. They put together a student conference because they wanted to meet other kids who do journalism in high schools. And they invited other districts who are going to create workshops where kids will learn about different aspects of journalism. And they have a keynote speaker who's a community member and also a CNN news anchor. I want to thank Scott for hooking me up with the initial idea, who graciously agreed to come in, and he's going to be presenting it 9:00 AM tomorrow. He may be live streaming it. So if they can't come, and I know some of you have expressed interest in coming, you can watch it on Bobcat TV, live stream.
Oh, yeah, I saw the Facebook announcement. That was, that was good.
Yeah, so it's really amazing. I think he's going to be really interesting.
Is the whole community invited to this, or just four of the children?
The live stream is, we, it was just more for the students and there's workshops, but I did invite the board. If you want to come to hear the keynote, feel free to come or live stream it and watch it. It's going to be pretty cool.
It's going to be in the auditorium?
In the auditorium, yeah.
And Tim, maybe too soon for this question, but the courses that are new at the high school this year, how are they going? Do you think you'll keep them next year, or do you not know yet?
Well, with, given the enrollment that we've had in those courses, I would say yes, but we don't know yet. I'm working with both Lisa and Deb Kay, the son's chairperson, and fun evaluating those. So sometime in January, February, I'll give you some feedback on our current analysis of how those courses are going. But the enrollment was really behind all four of those courses. Keep that, I've gotten, I've visited all those classes so far, and I think they're going well.
I'd like to give you some credit in and around these new courses, the music and Deepak's work there and pushing, I mean, great stuff. Talk about evolving education around music payday. I mean, terrific.
I'd like to audit some of those courses.
I'm it too.
And they're getting real-world experience, like the yearbook, making them to a class. When I first read those, like.
It was my fault.
Put your detail on it and everything that they're going to be involved in, it's real-world experience. Fantastic.
Yeah, we're through the same process, and I questioned, I met with Deepak, I met with Mr. Walsh, we talked it through, and it really made a lot of sense. You know, we'll try it out, we'll see how it goes.
Incredible. And more leadership opportunities, of course, would be in classes like that.
In all of these courses.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And that brings us to our interim assistant superintendent for business, Jim.
Just an update on the school lunch program. The board had awarded a bid for some kitchen work at Coleman Hill, and that work has now been completed. I gave you a couple of pictures in the board packet to take a look at. They installed new hot and cold serving counters, a cash register stand, and work tables, and you can see by the pictures, the work came out very well. Cafeteria staff is very excited about that. Just a few other things about the program to update you. There was a breakfast survey that was done last spring, and the district started offering a breakfast program at Coleman Hill and Wampus. Participation has not been real good. We plan on continuing the program through the rest of this year, and then as we get closer to the end of the year, we're going to try to increase participation, but if we get down to the end of the year and we still have very low participation, we may want to come back and revisit whether we will continue that program or not. Update on the.
Is that a paid breakfast program?
Yes, uh-huh.
So do the kids actually get there early enough to?
Well, that's part of, I think that's part of the problem, is that the buses, the kids who take the buses, aren't there early enough. They should buy breakfast.
Right, the timing is not, is not real good. Update on the Byram Bean Coffee Shop, started last year. That was a great idea that has increased participation in the program at the high school. It's a great spot for the students to grab a snack, place to study, relax, talk to their friends, what have you. So it's still continuing to be very popular. They serve a variety of beverages, natural snacks, grab-and-go items, including yogurt, parfaits, fruit cups, have Boars Head sandwiches, smoothies, organic milk, and what have you. Open between 7:30 and 3:00. We also this year started a new email reminder for low or negative balances in the program. It's had a very positive effect on reducing the number of charges and negative balances in the program. So that's, that was a very good initiative. And in terms of the program overall, we're serving more meals per day than we did last year, 1.2% over last year. That number is a little deceiving because they changed the à la carte meal rate equivalent. They went from $3, the state gives us the number, it's $3.53 last year, that was your denominator. So you took all your sales for à la carte, divide by 353, and that's your meal equivalent. This year, it's 362. So even though the meal equivalent went up, so the denominator went up, you would expect the overall number to go down, it has gone up. So that's, that's good news. Another way to say it is if you look at revenue year over year from September, October, November last year versus this year, we're almost 3% higher than we were last year. So again, very positive, and a lot of that is due to the, to the high school. The other three buildings are basically the same in terms of their participation. Other news, Armark provided clementines at the Thanksgiving lunch. Plan on doing the same thing at the December holidays. It was very well received, very popular. One note, school food authorities, we participate in the National School Lunch Program in Wampus and Coleman Hill, and the program is reviewed every three years by the state, and we've received notice that we're going to be reviewed. Susan has done a tremendous amount of work. My secretary, Mary, and also Melinda Hamilton from Armark have done a lot of work pulling together the information for that audit. It's, you know, the packet is about this that they had to go through and get information. So we expect, a lot of that information has gone back into the state now, and we expect the audit probably sometime in January or February. And we feel very confident. We have a school lunch consultant, and she's been involved with us also, so we feel very confident going into this audit. And finally, this is year four of the contract. We can extend the contract one more year. That probably will be my recommendation at the end of the year, and you'll have to go out and bid for a new contract in the spring of 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
I wanted to just, quick, quick question on the, it looked like there was a reduction in the change order on the garage.
Yes, there was.
Tremendous change on that, and I just want to say thanks, Jim and Steve, I guess, for going back and, you know.
Well, the board's guidance was helpful on that, too.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for staff reports, right? Here brings us to, thank you very much. It brings us to board reports. I'm not going to give a report, but does anybody have any committee reports?
I have a couple of quick things from the Westchester Department of the School Board Association. The first is that there's a feeling that Westwood has gotten through all its constituencies, that there are a lot of districts that want to do some work around the questions related to school start time, especially given the American Academy of Pediatrics. And it's a complicated issue, and it's one that you need to research very thoroughly. So the School Board Association, this is not definite, they're leaning towards creating a task force just to try to gather information so they can serve as a repository for districts. If a district doesn't want to use it, they don't have to, but if a district wants to use it, then they can. So it's just going to, you know, hopefully ultimately be a free resource to use on that issue. And then the second thing is the federal tax bill that right now is in Washington and in conference, there's obviously focus on that as well. It has some multifaceted impact on the state and on the way schools are funded, and so we'll stay tuned on that front to see what happens. And I think the third thing is that they have a, an effort to try to get some positive news about public schools out in the county and in the region. And in that regard, they want to try to, every month, pick another district and just work with the district to get a positive story about some of the things that are going on in that district. So I think we're slated for May, so when the time comes, we can talk about it.
Right, we have enough to talk about.
They could come any day.
Yeah, that's absolutely right.
Talk to the kids.
Get these kids better.
Tonight would be perfect.
Or tomorrow, right, it's any day.
Thank you, anybody else?
Great.
Communication Committee met yesterday, and we talked about budget brochure, the Budget Information Committee meeting in April, and the calendar. And we're going to see some copy rewrite for part of the budget brochure that has to do with Proposition 2. Okay, and if anybody has any changes that they would like to see for calendar, whatever, let us know too. Okay, yeah, just the Communications Committee. And let's see, Town Liaison, we're meeting December 15th. And then our next board meeting is not until after the holidays, so say a quick happy holiday in advance to everybody. Our next one starts the budget process, right, Budget Hearing 1 in January.
That's so quick, that's crazy.
Where did the year go?
I don't know.
Does anybody have any topics for future agendas or requests for information?
I do. Listening to things that the superintendent was speaking about, I'm wondering, given the demographic report, whether or not we should consider, and I'm not saying we should do it, just consider taking a look again at the class size guidelines. Whether or not they remain relevant, is what they want, given the way we see demographics shaking out over the next few years. We haven't really toyed with them in 15 years. It never hurts to take a look. I'm not recommending anything, but I leave it to your judgment whether you think it's something you want to look at. I'm not asking for it, I just want to raise it to see whether it's not something you think would be appropriate to look at. That's point one. And point two is I was just astonished to read in the news that Section 1 took the basketball championships out of the county center and brought it to Pace University, which is one of the bonehead moves of our generation. Well, I can think of a few others, but it wasn't, it wasn't a smart move. And I, apparently there was a meeting today, and the executives of Section 1 were just, you know, pointing fingers at each other, no one was coming clean. But I would, I mean, this is, we do this for the kids. You know, and take this opportunity away from the kids. When you play basketball, boys or girls, you want to go to the county center, moving it to Pace, doesn't really strike me as a great idea. But I'd like to know a little bit more about what happened, what the decision was, was it, if it wasn't financial, what was it? I mean, we're dues-paying member of Section 1. I'd like to know what the thinking was behind it. I'd like, I really would like to know what information is out there that maybe Rob is privy to, whether or not they're going to go back and ask a reconsideration. I think this was a horrible decision. It really was unfair to the kids.
I don't believe they're going to ask for any reconsideration, but Rob does have talking points that he was presented with from Section 1 that I'd be happy to share.
I read it in the newspaper, which are all nonsense, by the way. So I, but I would just like to know, to the extent we have any more information about why this decision was made, apparently there's no information out there, but somebody made some decision to do it. I'd like to know, and we have a right to ask. We're, I think Jen Simmons and her team have really, not done the kids any, any good here.
Well, for, for that particular point, I mean, you said there is, there are talking points out there that.
There are talking points.
Well, that's from, that's from Jen Simmons to give the AEDs to say why it's a good idea, but the AEDs aren't buying it. They know it's ridiculous. So I'd like to see if there's any other information out there, and whether that's anything that can be done. I know we have a new county executive coming in, maybe he's willing to address the situation. Only because the kids look for this. This is something the kids really look forward to. I'm not planning the county center, you know, but.
It is a big deal. I, I agree with you, Ira.
I think it's a terrible decision. Whoever made it, I've yet to hear, I've yet to hear a reasonable rationale. Everybody from the county said, we did everything we could to make the deal, and everybody at Section 1, other than this little cadre of people, said we wanted to stay, we wanted to stay. Somebody made a decision, and I haven't heard the reason why. So I'd like to know.
Well, as far as more, it would really just be more information for the board, because I don't see this as.
Change in it.
Yeah, I don't see this changing it so that we can affect changing it.
This says, "Request for information."
Yeah, no, I know.
I'm requesting information. I'm not saying it's going to turn to an action item. I want information.
So would you like, I mean, I don't know that the information that Rob would be able to get or anything that I would be able to get is anything other than what Section 1 has published.
Then you'll tell me that.
Yeah.
That's fine. I just want to know if there's anything out there. Or I may send, I may send an RFI, I may send a few information request myself to Section 1.
There's an athletic advisory committee meeting coming up, maybe that's something that we can ask in advance to address.
I just think it's an outrageous decision, that's all.
That would be good. I mean, if you can...
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll want to talk about it.
And then bring it back to the board.
Yeah, we could do that.
Please, please. Thank you.
So you know, many superintendents, including myself, did not know anything until after the decision.
I believe it. I totally believe it.
And I know that there are superintendents on that group.
Yeah.
But I know that the high school principal learned at the same time that I did. So, you know, there wasn't really a go out and assess the...
Knucklehead decision.
And that's all I'll say. I know some other financial information, but I don't feel that it's prudent for me to talk about it unless I have the numbers in front of me.
I heard it wasn't based on money, which is...
It's not much money.
Yes, all right.
So you know, in the spirit of the leadership kids telling us that we have to really listen, I forgot what you said the first point was that you wanted for information. Can you tell me again?
Madam President.
Section 1.
No, before that one.
Yeah, Madam President, the issue I raised was asking the superintendent to consider whether it's appropriate to revisit in some way the class size guidelines.
Thank you. See, scores is so, like, it just really, you know...
We'll have a discussion about that in our next board meeting.
Okay.
Class size guidelines.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay. And communications to the board, there was one which I shared with everybody. It was a new member of a Connecticut school board who was looking for some guidance on their, hiring a new superintendent. And I shared with them a evaluation tool.
Don't share, Jen, but that's all.
Nope. Nope, she's ours. Can I have a motion to approve our board minutes from November 7, 2017?
Some...
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, forgot to ask any changes. We approved it, I guess. Thank you. And as I said, the board already met in executive session and I mentioned all the items that we covered. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Not yet. Not yet, Madam President. I want the minutes to reflect that the Byram Hills Board of Education records with deep